Good morning and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for the District of Squamish for October 8th, 2019. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. I am Doug Grace, the acting mayor this month, and I will be chairing this meeting. And the first is an adoption, first motion is for the adoption of the agenda. I don't anticipate any changes or additions. Group councillor Herbert, second councillor Stoner, all in favor. And the first order of business is item 31, landfill gas flare option analysis. Mr Wickham, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I am Chris Wickham, Director of Engineering. And I am here with Jesse Morewood, our capital projects manager, and Shannon White, our sustainability coordinator, who is responsible for solid waste. And I just wanted to place things in very recent context. We had our climate action plan first meeting for our leadership team last night. And we saw some draft results for our community's carbon emissions. And as one might expect, gasoline for cars was a big part of that. But I think we were all pretty surprised to see on a pie graph just how significant the landfill is. And largely due to the methane emissions from rotting organics, basically. And we'll get into that a little bit more here. So we're here to talk about exactly that piece of pie graph. But I think the important thing there is we have some effect on cars and people driving them and that sort of thing. We have very direct effect and can take very swift action on methane emissions from our landfill. And so this is a very significant lever that we have our hands on. We have the great advantage that when the vertical expansion of the landfill was approved by council, one of the caveats on that is we will do a vertical expansion, but we have to also do a flare stack once that expansion is done. And so that's actually been in our five-year plan for a number of years now. And we're coming up on time to actually build that flare stack. And so we're here today to talk about what exactly we're going to build and some of the pros and cons. I'll turn that over to Jesse to get into the details.
Great, thanks, Chris. So our recommendation is that District's commis direct staff to proceed with the active gas flare option. And this has always been our intention. It's in our five-year capital plan and is currently funded. So as Chris was saying, we're nearing the end of our vertical expansion project, and so we're really starting to focus on this. And when we started to research this, we realized there was another option, and this is the passive gas flare option. So we just wanted to make sure that council knew the pros and cons of each option because they're fairly different, and so the council is able to make an informed decision. So this is a projection, a graph of what our landfill methane emissions currently are or currently are and projected to be. What this basically says is that as we continue to put garbage into the landfill, methane production increases. It peaks right about, or peaks when, or sorry, it starts to drop as soon as we stop putting garbage into the landfill. And that's projected right now to be 2027, when our landfill reaches capacity. And then so as, when you stop putting garbage into the landfill, methane drops. So just a quick background and for the public, why, basically what methane is and why it's produced. So currently in our landfill, we're projecting in 2019 that the landfill is going to produce approximately 677 tons of methane. And this will increase to 2027 to approximately 859 tons. Landfill gas is actually a mix of two things, methane and carbon dioxide. There is some other trace elements in there, but for kind of simplicity, it's approximately 50% methane and 50% carbon dioxide. So methane is, how and why it produces, methane produces, is kind of based on multiple things. The content of waste, for example, a lot of organics going into the landfill can produce a lot of methane. Moisture for this climate, this rainy climate produces it. But also other things like nutrients, pH, and temperature. Methane is a very powerful greenhouse gas. It's about 25 times more powerful than CO2. So as Chris mentioned, we are intending to build a flare. And so flare is a really effective tool to burn off that excess methane. So this goes back to 2016, when we said that we would look into this after we finished building the vertical expansion project, which is where we're at. So it is in our current financial five-year plan to build an active gas flare, sorry, an active gas collection flare. So I'll show you a photo on the next slide. But basically, you put out wells and pipes into the landfill. All the, these pipes collect the methane and direct it to a flare, which then is basically a spark that burns the flare. Estimates vary on how efficient this system is at actually collecting the gas, but optimistically, it's about 75% of the methane that a landfill produces can be captured by an active gas collection flare. So, you know, if it produces, for example, 1,000 tons of methane, this system can capture up to about 75% of that methane. One of the real benefits of this system is it can be expanded. It can be put in at the very beginning of a landfill, so it can grow with the landfill. Or it can be put into an existing current landfill. So you put it in a half fill landfill, the landfill continues to grow up, and then you can actually expand the system to grow with the landfill. This is a more expensive option than what we'll talk about in a minute. Estimates are, you know, $900,000 or less to build this. This project would be funded by borrowing. And what we're projecting right now is the borrowing costs to pay for this project is about 3.5% cost that would be put on the, sorry, the 3.5% increase to the tipping fees. And this would be put in place in 2021. So here's just a quick diagram, a very simple diagram of what it looks like. The well field was, that would be the current landfill. You put in wells into the existing garbage. It collects the methane that then is sucked up by a blower and sent to the flare where it's burned. So the alternative is what we're calling the passive gas flare. So this system, instead of kind of putting wells into the landfill, you actually put, just use the, you put it on, you put the pipes on top of the existing landfill. So it's, it only can be put on closed landfills because the landfill needs to be completed and covered. You can't put it on existing landfill. It doesn't use sophisticated blowers and technology to suck the gas out, but it still has a very simple spark system to ignite the methane. So at the end of the day, it's still burning the methane. The catch with the system is it's a less efficient way to capture the methane. As I mentioned, it can only be put on closed landfills. So currently about half our landfill is closed. And so what we're saying right now is we're estimating about 25% of the methane being produced by our landfill would be captured initially when we install this system. But in 2027, when we anticipate closing the second part of the landfill, we could then put the system on top of the future closed landfill, and we'd capture approximately 50% of the methane that's being produced by the landfill. So it's really, you can expand it, but you only can expand it on closed landfills, unlike the active system. However, the cost of this system is significantly less than the active system. We're estimating approximately $300,000. This will be paid through our utility reserves. Here is a quick diagram of our system. This is basically currently what it looks like. So what you're seeing is grass on top. You've got soil cover and a membrane on top of the landfill. You have pipes just under this layer that's perforated pipes that's capturing the gas. And then this is what it looks out there. There's these little candy cane pipe stacks that the methane is just kind of seeping into the atmosphere right now. With the passive system, you basically put a pipe onto that candy cane and you direct it towards a flare somewhat like this, where you burn off the excess methane. So it's a relatively simple, inexpensive system. We briefly want to talk about carbon neutrality, as that's one of the district's goals. What this chart is showing is our corporate emissions are approximately 1,236 tons of CO2 equivalent. How we're currently addressing that to achieve carbon neutrality is we have a household organic raised composting system that offsets a large portion of this. The remainder, the district buys offsets through the community carbon marketplace for the remainder of those offsets, and that costs us approximately $4,600. Want to put into context kind of what Chris was referring to. All that left again is that 1,236 are current corporate emissions. As I started with, landfills created an enormous amount of methane. Because that methane is 25 times more powerful when you convert it to CO2 equivalent, it's actually about 17,000, 17,000 tons of CO2 equivalent that the landfill is currently emitting, or we project it's currently emitting. With the passive flare, using that 25% efficiency, you decrease the total emissions by about 25% estimated. And so that brings it down to about 12,600, 700 tons. The active flare is even more efficient at capturing the existing methane in the landfill. And so then what we're saying is it is the methane getting into the atmosphere would be significantly less, somewhere around, you know, 4,200 again, out of the estimate.
And I want to just break in there and just point out that that still, even if we go with an active system, we still have a very significant amount of GHG's going into the atmosphere, four times all of our operations, corporate operations. And so it's just important that this isn't like the technological silver bullet, now we can all throw our banana peels in the garbage and nobody cares because we bought a flare system. It's still a very important part of our carbon strategy, needs to be having entire community, including ICI or institutional, industrial, and commercial customers, keeping their organics out of the landfill and composting them instead. So this does not negate that of a program in any way. They're both important.
So I just want to, I just provide a bit of a summary sheet, just to kind of, again, kind of pull it all together. So the passive flare is less efficient. I'm saying we're estimating 25% year one, and then it will increase when the second part of the landfill closes. The active gas fair is a much more efficient system generally. However, the passive flare system is significantly less expensive, capital costs as well as maintenance costs. We don't have accurate maintenance costs at this point, but again, they're significantly different systems and significantly different operational costs. The financing for these two systems is also different. The passive system could be paid for through the solid utility waste reserves, which we currently have. Whereas the active system, we have to borrow money, and this would increase the tipping fee in 2021 by 3.5% on top of any other potential increases. The passive system isn't especially scalable. It's only scalable on the closed landfills, whereas the active system can be expanded to grow with as the landfill continues to be filled. We have a GHG accounting here, a DOS consulting firm, and they can answer this question, or any questions better for this. But as far as carbon neutrality, potentially both systems can be, help us our emissions to become carbon neutral. As far as sale, we did look into briefly into whether the additional carbon that we were, our CO2 equivalent that we would be removing through a flare system could be saleable. It's unlikely for both, certainly for the passive system, it's not possible. The active system, there's a possibility, but there's significant regulatory, financial hurdles to doing that. And again, if there's more questions around that, I will direct it to GHG accounting. The other thing that we did look into was whether we could produce, use the methane to produce natural gas through these systems. The active flare is a much more sophisticated system with technology that measures both what type of fuel is coming out of the landfill as well as the quantity. So it's a much more, it's a system that can be used with, to track natural gas. It's also a much higher efficiency system. So we did talk to, Shannon and I did talk to Fortis and another company about the potential of it. And both kind of said, you really want a high efficient, sophisticated system to potentially create natural gas. However, both systems at this point look like there's a certain kind of break even place for that, and currently probably don't meet it with the existing amount of methane that we produce. However, the active, the active gas system is probably scalable as we create more methane, if that makes sense. So coming back to the recommendation, district's recommendation that we proceed with the active gas flare option. However, there are alternatives. One is that we proceed with a passive gas flare option, or that we postpone implementation till more information, research is available.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
I've got a whole boatload to start here. Do we have any sense of how this compares to like bogs and swamps, wood waste lots and other such things where capital goes instead and have a possibly larger impact for the investment?
Wood waste tends to, well, the wood waste one, I might pass on to other, to GHG accounting, actually, they have more intelligent things to say. Basically, wood breaks down slower. And we also, as a district, don't have a wood waste landfill. There is a privately owned wood waste landfill in the district boundaries. But this is, this landfill is ours, and it's our residents' garbage going into it and organics going into it. And so this has been the focus up to now. Collecting any methane coming off of wetland areas would have a very high environmental impact. And so I don't think that that's an option. Also, wetlands, there's something called blue carbon that we're exploring. I don't know that much about, they can, wetland areas can be a net sink, actually. So I would say wetland areas are off the table at this point. Did you want to, either one of you have anything to say about wood waste landfills versus municipal garbage landfills and methane production?
Could you introduce the?
Oh, sorry. Can you introduce yourselves?
My name is Dan Anderson. I'm a greenhouse gas accountant and lead in the team of GHG accounting.
I'm Luisa Bohena. I work for GHG Accounting.
Thank you. Go ahead, if you have anything to add to that.
Yeah, I'm just backing up what Chris has elaborated. So the methane production from the landfill side, from organic matter that's in there, is extremely high. It's a very high source of greenhouse gases. And that's like food waste, and those are high intensity garbage items. Wood waste would be way lower on the food chain, so to speak, unintended in terms of the production of methane. So this is the biggest lever that you have in your community.
Do you want to follow up?
Different topics.
Okay, give you one more, then we have other speakers.
So quantum engineering is right now using fossil gas as a source for helium. And they need more helium than is available in the ambient air for how their process work. There's nothing, a lot of fossil gas. I'm wondering if we have a sense of what the helium content is, and if we explore, would they have any interest in doing something on that site? And maybe not issue, there's absolutely no helium, but if there's a higher than atmosphere, you know, just curious if that's something you could do at all.
I could address that through the chair. I think you mean carbon, is your?
Quantum. Quantum, helping the helium out of fossil gas, as opposed to sequestration, carbon engineering.
Okay, I don't, I know nothing about that, other than helium is available in fossil gases, but is not available in methane. Helium itself escapes, its thermal velocity is greater than escape velocity, so it escapes as soon as, as soon as it gets out from where it's trapped, and wouldn't be available here.
So it's not in that forecast? Go ahead.
Luisa is familiar with quantum as well.
So the helium wouldn't be higher than in the atmosphere, because there's no production of helium.
Senator Mary Ellen, councillor Brinch.
Okay, a couple of questions. It seemed from the GHG accounting report that selling carbon credits wasn't really a viable option. But the other, Spurly Hansen and Associates seem to sort of lay that up a bit in their report. And I'm wondering if it's just a matter of where the expertise lies, if there's not agreement between those two reports, sort of that's a knowledge thing, or whether one's just more bullish than the other.
We have, we of course deal with this subject matter on an everyday basis, and that's our focus of our work. We do work very closely with the government. Our opinion is formed, or our recommendation is formed based on our daily work, also with the government itself and the bodies involved. My understanding is that the other consulting company doesn't deal with the subject matter on a daily basis and doesn't engage the same government bodies in the same way that we do.
Is there an opportunity? I mean, I know our, technically, we don't really need to do this, we fall under the regulations, but when we look at our overall GHG footprint as a community, it is a huge portion of that footprint. So is there an opportunity, if we put in an active system, to capture it by, instead of flaring it, to greenhouse operation or hydrogen production? Just trying to think of, rather than, to take care of that last sort of 4,200 tons, can we use it for something that needs it?
Can I add something, please? Sure.
So if you, based on the landfill regulation, you're not required to put it in. However, you are a signatory to the climate action charter, which requires you to lower your community emissions. So back to your entrance, indirectly, you are actually required to capture and deal with these emissions to some extent.
Somehow, yeah, okay. And then is it too small to actually do something with? I know other communities use it to generate power, but they have much, much larger landfills. So I'm wondering if there's sort of a lesser use, so that we could, if there's a pathway to looking at that by putting in an active system?
There is, absolutely. That's through the chair. That's, that's an excellent question. I would just nuance, it's not the last 4,200, it's the other 12,000 that we are capturing, that we can use for things.
Oh, yeah, there you go, yes.
So it's even better than that. And that's one of the big advantages on our comparison. We concentrated on converting it to a natural gas that can be used in all sorts of technologies. But as you point out, there's all sorts of other things. It can be used as a chemical feedstock, and it can be burned more directly without converting it to greenhouses. There is land nearby that is appropriately zoned potentially, or that could end up coming up with some sort of industrial use that would synergize nicely with this. That's an advantage of the active flare, is that we can today deal with that methane, and then tomorrow, whoever comes up, or whatever we decide, it's very easy to take that same piping system and everything and put a Y valve in it and pipe it off elsewhere. We would still need the flare stack, because when they go down for maintenance, or if there's a business problem or whatever, we need to do something with the methane. So nothing is lost by putting in the active system, but something may be gained.
Yeah, sorry, if I could, through the chair. I would also add that the active flare has, it's a more sophisticated system, so you track the quantity of methane that's coming out of the flare, or start coming out of the landfill. So we, Shannon and I spoke with Fortis recently, and what they said was, well, one benefit of putting the active flare in is that you could track it for a year or two, you know exactly how much methane you're getting, and then it's more useful potentially to a company who wants to know how much you're actually going to produce.
One thing caught my eye, this at the end, when we talked about how to fund this, and I know that the capital investment here, but the operating costs are inconsequential for the active flare. But the GHG accounting report says that significant funding opportunities exist for such environmentally responsible projects under the Pannekenine Framework, and also the Community Resilience Fund if we wanted to use the methane later. And have we explored grants versus just doing it through borrowing?
Through the chair. We know they're out there, we haven't, we haven't dug into it at this point. It's something we can do coming up.
It'd be one of those, like a similar we do for dicking, we put in the budget, then if we get the grant, we use the grant instead of the money.
Absolutely. Councillor Brinch, then councillor Stoner, and then I'll put myself on the list, and councillor Anderson, and councillor Bohena.
I'm scrambling, because the mayor asked the two questions that I'm most interested in. So maybe just will add that I am a fan of, let's use this resource. I pay a lot of money every year at Fortis BC for these chemicals. And we're talking about just burning them off and sending them into the environment. So the Community Resilience Fund and research into what potentially could be available for us out of that fund is definitely of interest. Thank you.
This is a bit of a context question. You mentioned that we are able to use our composting program as part of our corporate emissions offset. And I'm just curious, do composting facilities have the similar flaring technology to deal with the methane? Because my understanding is that it's a result of decomposition process, whether that's happening in a composting facility or in the landfill. What's the difference?
Thank you very much for that question. We glossed over that a little bit. In a composting system, it's an aerobic decomposition, and so in fact, they use oxygen blowers and make sure there's enough oxygen that it's carbon dioxide that's coming off. In anaerobic digestion, it's methane that comes off. So in the landfill, buried, date down inside of all the muck, there's not enough oxygen. And so that's when the methane, just 25 times more powerful, comes out. So when we flare it, we take the methane, which is a combination of carbon and hydrogen atoms, and we turn them into CO2 and water by burning it. And so we're just getting right back to that CO2 that we would get if we were composting. So you compost, you can skip the flare stack.
Thank you. That's why it's so important to keep composting and not put more organics in the landfill.
Very important.
Got it.
Thank you.
Follow us?
Go ahead.
Additional questions? I appreciate the induction that you painted with respect to where this fits with regards to the community carbon action plan, and that the landfill is obviously a big source of greenhouse gases for us, according to our initial results. But still looking kind of forward into the future, knowing that our budgets are limited and tight, and I'm thinking in particular the real estate facilities master plan, for example, where we know that we have a whole bunch of construction coming up, where this million dollars, give or take, could potentially be used for a greener building. So do we have any sense of weighing those sorts of options at this point?
Through the chair. Because this comes out of the solid waste utility, we look at it as something very different, because it is funded through borrowing, and then borrowing is paid for through utility fees or the landfill tipping fees. And so that's outside of the financial model and doesn't negatively impact the real estate facilities master plan, outside of the impact on borrowing. And perhaps Mr Russell can speak to that.
I'm sorry, I didn't pay attention, but I did catch hold of your question.
I'm sorry, I didn't pay attention, but I did catch hold of your question.
So the question would be, given that this will impact our potential to borrow overall, what is the, how will that affect our plans and requirements for the real estate facilities master plan? Or will it?
The, the amount that we are looking at for this project was included in the 2019 for 2023 financial plan. So at this stage, it is, we have incorporated the borrowing of 1.25 million dollars in our estimates of total borrowing availability. So my comment would be that this does not impact our ability to borrow further in that although the actual work would not take place until 2020, we had anticipated this potential borrowing taking place in 2020 already.
So if you could go back to, and myself, then Councilor Anderson, Councilor Peddyl. If you could go back to the slide with the red line on, this was on the earlier slides. Something I was curious about when I was reading this is it just seems to suddenly drop off when we stop putting garbage in, waste in. But is it not still there decomposing? Is it somehow stopped decomposing?
It, it is decomposing and that's why it takes, what is it, ten years basically to drop off to close to zero. That's, that's the garbage that's there rotting away. And then eventually it's all rotted and there's no more emissions. So this doesn't take into account whatever happens after we close the vertical expansion. Our garbage will still exist and will be going somewhere. And that's, that's another discussion that we'll be having over the, over the coming months of what happens next. But the garbage for the current footprint, the current landfill, eventually the emissions do go to zero. But it takes some time, as you can see, it tapers off at twenty-seven, basically.
It's about ten years and that's it? And then is the flow that comes out, is that a constant flow? Is this flare always on or does it somehow collect to a certain point before it ignites?
I can answer the question for the passive, but for the, for the active, I'm not sure. The passive is, is a solar powered spark. So what that means is when the gas pressure builds up enough, the spark actually ignites to burn the gases in the system and then it turns off when it's not required. For the active, I'm not sure, maybe GHG knows the answer. Certainly there's more, there's more methane being produced. So theoretically it would be on more, whether it's on constantly or not, I don't know.
Yes, it will actually be on constantly.
Almost constantly.
Yep.
Councilor Anderson, then Councilor Peddyl.
I found this package of reports very informative on different, in different fields. So offsets and funding technology, but also knowledge gaps. And I note that, and I chased further in founder Golda Associates' report from 2008 for the province on inventory of GHG emissions from landfills in B.C. And one of the points it makes is that we really don't know very much about our landfills in this province. And that was a point that was made at the UBCM conference. There was a panel discussion on solid waste and that point was brought home by the provincial government representative, among others, that we really don't know, have very much information on our landfills. Here in Squamish, we probably have ten landfills that we've used in the last ten years. If we look at the private sector as well. And in that, those private sector landfills, there's eight at least that have been used since the 1970s for wood waste. And the district's been involved in all of those as well because they include land clearing, debris and other types. But my question is, well, I'll just add that the volume that is in those ten landfills is probably somewhere between two and four million cubic meters. And we're talking four hundred thousand, four hundred thirty thousand tons for the current municipal landfill. So what I'm curious about is whether and to what extent we should be looking at the bigger picture. I appreciate the comment regarding wood waste that's been made. However, our wood waste landfills are quite varied and they're in two categories. One is for sawmill fines, hog, and the other, most of it is chunky material, which would perhaps have a different rate of decomposition and so on. So I'm curious as to what does the province say about this? Are we going to have some expect, new expectations coming down the pipe from the province on understanding what they are? I know, I see, note that there's also B.C. Organic Waste Diversion Quantification Protocol is pending. How is the world evolving on what we know about our landfills? And here in our community, I think we should be looking at the bigger picture. And that is where we're going in our strategic plan, not corporate, but beyond to community at large. I guess I've elaborated a bit, a bit too much, but I wonder if you may be able to comment on what I've said.
Who wants to answer this question?
So there's like, I mean, there's a few aspects that you mentioned and of course always a good idea to look at the bigger picture. You have to consider in your consideration of this that for sure the province is interested that these issues are dealt with. So various programs and support and recognition through the community's system, the province is eager to support municipalities in dealing with the reduction of methane emissions from any form of landfill. So definitely in the framework that is supported by the province. All the funding agencies will be supportive of this to go in these directions. When it comes to the knowledge gap that you mentioned, industry understanding is that all that we know and will be estimated about landfills as well as wastewater treatment plants is a common understanding in the industry that we underestimate the amount of methane emitted from this. So addressing these issues is by all means environmentally responsible, I would say, in our, in our professional view. And the last aspect that you also have to consider in your, looking at this aspect is the time aspect. So for some of your landfills, the majority of the methane might have already escaped because the waste might be, if you look back from the seventies, look at that. So you want to address, of course, your landfills, but you also want to address them, the ones that have the most potent emissions at the moment. And that would be the landfill that you're to deal with right now. So that would be still an appropriate strategic focus that you're currently seeking, it seems to me.
Go ahead.
The infrastructure that you would be proposing for the active system. Fortis, among others, have been wanting or interested and invincible regarding wood waste conversion in our area in the Chikai Fan area where most of the wood waste activity is. And one of the things that comes up is that their line to Whistler is quite close proximity to the landfill. Is there, is it possible that we may be able to use that infrastructure in new types of operations regarding gas to energy or conversion in that vicinity? Is the infrastructure that we would be putting in the active system, is there, are there future considerations like that?
Yes, thanks for the question through the chair. Yes, we, we talked to Fortis recently. They said that they, any, any natural gas generation from the landfill or associated infrastructure could be tied in to the, to the Whistler line at Highway 99. So it's a 1.1 kilometer line and that's very buildable. But at current, estimated current methane production, it's not quite enough to, to break even with it, with the facility, so.
Go ahead.
Through the chair is that also as we move forward in talking about the end of our landfill and next steps and stuff, that is potential to, that's where the conversation will be included in, in upgrading an active landfill gas capture system and potentially seeing what other pieces could be added to it.
I think it's just, we'll, we'll all take a turn. I, I think it's also important to note that you don't just take landfill gas and just shove it in the pipeline. That this is nasty stuff and it's mixed with all sorts of other things. And, and it won't burn cleanly in your, in your stove at home. And so there's a multimillion dollar upgrader required that would have to be built and on top of the active system to collect this, another facility to refine it and then send it off to the pipeline.
Yeah, that was estimated at five to 10 million, I think, in the report.
Yeah, sorry, through the chair, slightly different technologies. That, that was a conversion system. So one company provided us information about actually converting the CO2 portion of the, of the landfill gas. So there's methane and CO2 and that conversion system would actually convert the CO2 into natural gas. And that facility would be five to 10 million dollars. Fortis currently doesn't use that technology. They just take the methane and clean the methane and put it into the system. So there's, there's different technologies out there that come with a large capital cost. But going back to the councilor's question, the active gas flare is a much more scalable and usable system for, for the natural gas period. Does that make sense?
Councilor Peddyl?
I'm going to look to wind it up.
Yeah, and you, there's a new thing I have to ask now. If, if, if what you're saying is true, it's not just methane, there's all kinds of nasty stuff in there. If we're just flaring, whether we collect it actively or passively, like what other things are we producing than with just a flare without some of this process?
So anything that's, it's already coming out of the, out of the landfill. Trace amounts of with other things other than CO2 and, and water coming off of the flare. There, there will be nitrous oxides and whatnot. Any gases that are coming out are already going to atmosphere. Like if you put your hand under the candy cane, you can feel the, the warm wind on your hand coming out of the landfill. Do you guys have information on, on any other trace amounts that would be affected?
I would just say it, it burns like a flare, depending on the quality of the flare, provides oxygen for the methane to decompose into CO2. Any other gases, exactly as you said, that are not burned, come out equally to all trace amounts. It doesn't create other trace amounts. It doesn't create additional trace amounts.
I understand that, but I believe when you burn things, you oxidize them. Creating different newer chemical compounds. If there's nasty stuff in there and we're adding a flare, we might end up producing different sorts of compounds which are much more harmful. So, you know, have we looked at what we are creating by burning as opposed to just releasing? I understand the methane to carbon dioxide piece, but those other gases, what kind of transformations are happening?
Through the chair. It's, it's an excellent point. I would say there will be other compounds created. The, and whether those compounds are more or less damaging than the native compounds already coming out into the atmosphere, I don't know. Gas flaring at landfills is not only common, it's actually mandated legally. From landfill that's, that's large enough. And we're just under the, under the line where it's, where it's mandated. So the net effect on the, on the environment is a net positive. But there will, there will be other compounds coming from, from the flare other than pure CO2 and water.
Can I also add, again, just to make sure the perception doesn't go off there. The fact that Fortis requires you to use, for example, scrubbers is more for procedural conduct and for safety on their part rather than this is like really dangerous stuff that's been used there. So it's more like a process requirement than, than a requirement because there's lots of dangerous stuff.
And, and there's, there's no work safe requirements to be, you know, poisonous gases coming off and, you know, you just stick out when we walk by and the mayor and I shot a video standing in front of one recently. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not nice on equipment and it needs to be scrubbed before it goes in, into the, into the pipeline. But it's, we're not talking about a massive toxic problem for the community or the environment.
Councilor French, then Councilor Herbert. Oh, did?
Yeah, so the two points I meant to get to, so the one, to talk about global warming potential of 25 times methane versus CO2. But my understanding is that's, that's based on the idea that methane has a much shorter half life. And that's an average over, I believe, an eighty or a hundred year timeframe, which is important to look at that, the impact of that perspective. But because the half life is so short, over a 20 year timeframe, the global warming potential usually what I read is 88 times, not just 25 times. And why I think that's important is because we are skating right up to the line of survivability. We may, it may already be over. And so what happens in the next 20 years is critical. So I don't want to ignore the hundred year average, but I think that 20 year average is really important for all the analysis we're doing. And so I'm a bit, just in general, a bit concerned sticking our hat on just that 25 factor number because I think it's actually much higher in the critical timeframe you're looking at. And that's maybe an argument to pursue this even more aggressively because what happens in the next 20 years is huge. Now, somewhat contradicting that, when I look at wood fiber, if that proceeds, they're, they're proposing to process 2.1 million tons a year of methane. Mackenzie Wood, in their analysis of financial exposure of LNG plants, used a 10% fugitive emissions number. Normally in the research I read, they put fugitive emissions from LNG and industry processing around 3%. So that would put the fugitive methane at 63,000 tons to 210,000 tons per year if that goes ahead. And, you know, the industry may argue, well, it's only 1%. We're still many, 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 many tons over what's coming out of the landfill. And so when I look at that, I have to say, so if we put a million dollars or $300,000 into this, are we better actually leveraging that money? You know, we don't necessarily have the influence on some of these other projects we would like to, but we do still have some. So where do we put, best put that money? The other thing, if we feel we cannot impact that decision or there's just literally nothing we can do, has been suggested to me, maybe we need to start looking at adaptation. And if something like wood fiber is going to happen anyways, our, our relative impact of landfill is so much smaller that maybe we need to save that money for adaptation. And, and I understand, you know, there's different pots of money and so on, but at the end of the day, it's still money coming out of the taxpayers' pocket. We may appoint it to different places. So, you know, we could reduce our landfill charges and raise some of the other fees in the future to deal with adaptation. And so these are some of the things that I'm running through in my mind, trying to decide is this actually the most effective use of our money given the other things that are on the horizon?
Not sure if there's a question there for you or part of the debate on the motion.
Well, yeah, I think it speaks to the.
To the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll come back to that. We'll have the motion before I expect in a couple of minutes. So Councilor French, then Councilor Herbert.
Okay, so I think the timing of my question is good because it plays right off of where I think Chris might be taking us. In my mind, this discussion comes down to two choices. Flare, which is what's in front of us, or find a way to use the resource. And it sounds like finding a way to use the resource is, is expensive because we've got to create this additional infrastructure to clean up and make it, make it usable, take out the impurities. So my question is, in the cost structure around what we're looking at with the flaring, where, how do the costs play out? And specifically piping and collection, is that about equal to the flare infrastructure and everything associated with that? Or like a 50/50 between those components? Or is it more like piping and collection is 90% of the cost? Or flaring and associated parts is 90% of the cost? Can you give us some insight into that?
Through the chair, I'm, I'm not sure if I know. I would certainly guess for the, for the active flare, it's certainly more on the, on the skid, on the flare part of the skid rather than the piping, but there is wells and stuff. Maybe I'll direct that to GHG accounting if you have any experience with that.
The cost is higher in all areas, but you need a flare anyways, I mean, both, both scenarios. So it's difficult to break that down, I think. So everything is a bit more expensive because it's more effective. And you have a peso of all three.
So even if our emphasis is on collecting and using the resource to create energy, there still needs to be a flare in the system?
Yeah, so through the chair, we need, we need the flare as a backup regardless. In case the system goes down, we need to burn it. As I, as I originally said, that the active flare would track the amount of gas and the composite of the, the gas that's coming out of the landfill. So you still, that, that. So you still, that infrastructure is really useful. It's also much more, pulls the gas out more efficiently, so it helps with any kind of business case to sell that gas or to use that gas in some manner. Does that make sense?
Go ahead, Mr.
Just through the chair, just to add on that comment is that one thing in particular Fortis, and Fortis is just one of the opportunities out there, but we scope with them directly. And they essentially said to Jesse's point is, collect the data, find out what type of quality of landfill gas you're creating, and then have that conversation about how you use it. And so it's really not about to flare or not to flare. If we want to look at using the gas that is created at the landfill as a resource, we cannot move forward with passive flare as a district currently. I mean, we would have to upgrade it and basically put in an active flare system if we wanted to use the gas. The passive system only earns and distracts.
Counsel Herbert, and then we're going to look at the motion.
Thank you. My question's around timing. I see three things here that don't quite line up. One is the, we just saw the first draft for community emissions. The climate, that might really reinforce, what comes out of that might really reinforce going to go with this, but that's hasn't been proposed yet. The possibility, I do like the scalability of the active, and that's sort of one of its selling features, but without what the next move is at the core of landfill, that is presuming that it's quite close, maybe there's a planning element that needs to be put there. That's one of the selling features to me is that on the actives, it can be expanded to be on top of whatever our new landfill is, so we're sort of presupposing that it's adjacent to that. And then there's the potential funds from a grant. If we're here and we have potential funds for a grant that we could get the active for the price of the passive with the grant fund, then we'd be off the races with that. So with those three missing pieces and there's probably more, I'm tempted to wait a period of time till we can have some more clarity on those, which all seem to be things that are happening fairly soon in relative terms. So that's sort of where I'm sticking out with that, but if anyone has any data about the timing, why right now on this versus maybe even in a month or two, we have maybe one or more of those pieces ticked off.
So let me just, I'll go to staff in a second, but the decision point today, staff have brought to us options with the type of system. To me, this is not a budget decision. This is us telling staff that we prefer one over the other. That would then take it to the budget where we would fit it into the financial plan or not, and look for sources of funding, which may be grants or maybe borrowing or whatever else we have available. Am I correct in saying that? Did staff think that this was the budget decision today? Do you think we should have?
If I might do the chair, it's currently in the financial plan. So the budget's already been approved for our financial plan last year and it already fits into our capital model. So today is actually the specific type for council to approve.
But when you say it's in the financial plan, the 2019 budget identified it as a 2020 expenditure.
Correct.
When we get to the 2020 budget, if history is any guide, we sometimes change those things before we actually nail it down for 2020. So it's there, but it's never final until it's actually in the 2020 budget.
Certainly council could take it out of the budget. I'd have to go to staff in terms of timing. Legally, we could go ahead and tender for this, which is why we're coming to council now, but I'll defer to staff on the timing if you're hoping to do this before the next budget is approved.
Through the chair, so we currently have funding for design right now. So we would actually do the design over the winter and then theoretically, when the budget, 2020 budget's approved, we would be ready to go to tender at that point. So we actually wouldn't be using 2020 funding until the budget was technically approved, based on our timing. We'd be spending the design money, which is in the 2019 budget.
Clarifies that point?
A little bit, sorry.
This is not quite the final decision.
No, I understand that. I was more looking at the, one of the graphs I thought was helpful was comparing the amount coming off the landfill to our overall corporate. And that was really powerful to me and as far as the decision making, I'd like to see sort of this fit in that bigger context of whatever's going to come out of our climate action to me. So what are you calling that? The climate action fee? And those actions and just how that, I see, and that might just help double down on selling us on the active and really justify that spend. And similarly with being scalable and are we presupposing that the landfill's going, the landfill's going to be next, going to be next that? And that's a discussion I'd like to have so I know that we're doing something that we're going to be able to add on to. So I feel like there's a couple voids. I'm leaning towards the active, but those pieces would really sell the all.
I'm going to put forward a motion because you're debating a motion that's not really a little bit, I don't think we respect, so that the District of Squamish, direct staff proceed with the active gas collection flare design option as presented in the report to the committee and the whole. And during, and also look for opportunities to fund this through grants rather than borrowing tipping fees. And then a final decision will be made during the 2020 budget on the decision to go ahead.
Give a second? Second? Counsel, did you get that?
Would be helpful. Yeah. So that would just confirm that staff proceed with the active gas collection flare option as presented, it is mediated or will be adopted with 8019.
Just add the word "design," that they proceed with the design of the active gas collection flare option.
Sure. And also for option for funding, through grants rather than considering borrowing options. And the final decision that will be made, I won't get that.
Final implementation decision will be made during the 2020 budget discussion.
Counsel Ben, Counsel Anderson.
By having a specific request to research grant opportunities in the motion, it certainly is more attractive for me than the original motion. Because I think if we increase our landfill tipping fees, we'll see illegal dumping on forestry roads and remote roadways around the community increase. And I certainly am reluctant to go to borrowing to pay for.
Somebody else had to have, Counsel? Oh, it was Counsel Anderson, sorry. And then...
Thank you.
I put myself on the list.
I'm happy to support the current motion that we're considering. I'd just like to point out that the two resolutions cited to guide staff's work in this initiative are from the last council. And since then, we have explicitly moved to a community-wide focus. And I bring this up because I think this is relevant not only to energy conversion scenarios. And I spoke with Fortis people two weeks ago, and they are much more interested in wood waste conversion here and interested to examine that. And they also point out, to relate to our funding issue, that there's dollars available for new assessments and inventory, this type of work. So I think, I'd really like to encourage us to put that wider context in focus in considering how we allocate resources and expand the discussion to related solid waste issues. But I'm happy to support the motion.
The mayor, myself, Counsel Ben, you have...
So I would have been happy to support the original motion. I added those pieces to this motion to try and accommodate some of the concerns of my fellow council members. I think absolutely we need to take care of this huge greenhouse gas footprint that we produce through the landfill. Whether it expands horizontally or a new technology comes into play, there's a lot of GHG emissions that we have to account for. And as someone said early in the discussion, we did sign on to the Climate Action Charter, which makes us responsible for doing this. So I believe fundamentally that an active gas collection flare provides us the best option in the short term and the most flexibility in the long term, regardless of decisions that are made about landfill expansion. And so I am confident that whether we achieve grants for this, this is still the best way to go. So I'd be in support of my motion.
Thank you. And I'm also going to support the motion. And first, thank you, staff, for bringing the options to us, just so that we do have options and understand what we're dealing with. But for me, this is pretty straightforward. I think that notwithstanding the difference in price, there's really no other direction to go except with the active one. We have to be more efficient and that's the thing that drives us. And the landfill likely will expand, although we keep looking for other options for landfills generally, but at the moment, expansion is the one that's on the horizon. And this has the ability to be utilized in that with relatively simple. I appreciate that it's more expensive, but to me, these are dollars well spent. It's not a huge difference, $700,000, give or take. You know, what's proposed is perhaps, and we'll have another discussion on it, a small tipping fee increase. I'm not sure if that would drive behavior or not, but I don't think we have a choice if we are serious about this, other than to go with a more efficient system. And so I have Counsel Herbert, Counsel Patten.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion and thank you to the mayor for including that piece on the potential funding that you found. This is something that's important and is a huge source of our GHG footprint, so happy to support it and hopefully find some dollars out there to help us do that.
Counsel Ben.
Yeah, I think with the climate emergency declaration in mind, and I understand that my perspective is maybe a bit of a change in direction, but I think in this case, it may be warranted. I'm trying to weigh in my head our, sort of balance our potential for impact, the magnitude of that impact, and how much we have to spend to try and achieve that impact. And when I look at what's on our immediate horizon, I am not sure that this is the biggest bang for our buck. I would be probably pretty quickly on board if there was a grant that was going to fund the active option. But without that in place and some of the other things that are in play, I'm not convinced that this is the best way to spend our rather limited resources on a big problem. I think we could have a much bigger impact potentially. And so for that reason, I'm not ready to support this motion right now.
Further discussion? Counsel Sumner.
More than helping to support this motion, I do think that it's critical that we take this step in light of the climate emergency declaration, which one of the actions stated that all of our decisions need to be made in the context of a climate emergency and taking steps, both in the media and long-term, that'll get us there. The reality is that one of the core things that we're required to do as a municipality is manage solid waste. And to do that effectively and in a sustainable manner that will address the issues of methane production and our greenhouse gas footprint, this is the step that we need to take to do that. And I appreciate the flexibility of the active gas collection flare system that will hopefully be able to address some of the issues that we have in the longer term. And so thanks to staff for bringing forward those options. I appreciate the addition of looking for different funding that will come into play with this, because I do think that there is plenty of funding out there that'll help support it, but either way, I'm happy to see this move forward.
Go to the call. Call the question, all in favor. Pose. Counsel Patten, you all oppose, this motion carries. Thank you very much. Yep, so it'll take about a five-minute recess, everybody gets set up. Thank you, we're back after recess. We're now on item 3, sub 2, camping bylaw implementation. Turn it over to Scotty.
Hi, and thank you, council. Good morning, my name's Natasha Goldbeck. I'm the Senior Director of Community Services and with me is Chris Baker, the bylaw enforcement and animal control supervisor, and Scott Schonfeldt, Room Control, as a guest has joined us. So we're here today to do a couple of things. We want to update on the implementation of the camping bylaw that was adopted previously this summer. We want to also obtain council's feedback and direction on a couple of distinctly related issues, but separate issues. The policy and analysis for the policy alternatives for people who live in their vehicles year-round in Squamish and typically work in Squamish. And then additionally to that, our partnership and model development with Flinrow on a new campsite model for people who visit Squamish and who are recreation-driven. The reason these things come together is because from an outside sort of first glance, they look the same. It's people living in their vehicles, but as, you know, we've had lots of discussion and engagement and analysis about these being actually really different populations. It is actually a continuum, but you can draw a bit of a line around who the people are, what their needs are, and what their interests in the community are. So they require different policy approaches. So that's why we're here. So the implementation of the camping bylaw that was passed in this summer, and just a reminder, the objective of the bylaw was really about having an extra tool for enforcement officers to move campers who are camping in undesignated areas to designated campsites where risk mitigation infrastructure exists. Principles of enforcement, as we said at the time, and has continued to be the case, is voluntary compliance first, education and prioritizing high-impact and high-risk activities. The voluntary compliance has been very high. One ticket, we're calling it almost issued to date because it was actually, I did write in the report, one ticket issued to date, but it turns out that was under the, our CMP issuing ticket under the camping section of the traffic bylaw. So technically, we have not issued any tickets to date under this bylaw, but we have had lots of education utilizing the framework of the bylaw and 20 or 25 warnings issued under this bylaw to date. And people are very accommodating and responsive to that education, which has been fantastic. We did have a situation where five tents were removed after bylaw, warnings were not heated, and the tents were subsequently returned to the owners and then they did move. So I think it was not issued in that situation, but that was the most sort of dial-up that we've been in terms of warnings and education in this area. Another thing I want to mention about implementation is that the calls coming in from the public complaining about camping have been about the same. We're on track this year to have the same number as we had last year, but the tone of the calls have really changed and people, the public, you know, this is a bit of an unintended consequence because of the public nature, the dialogue we have around this, has been really appreciating the complexity of the issue and that sometimes this is about housing and sometimes this is about camping infrastructure. And people seem to have some more awareness about that and the antagonism has dialed down significantly from the public, what we've noticed anecdotally. So switching gears here to talking about the housing continuum, just very briefly, this is a graphic from, can people see this? Should we turn off the light? Is that okay? That's okay? Thank you. From the Affordable Housing Strategy, just representing the continuum of housing issues and options. On the left is the temporary housing. This is where you'd see program-based interventions, short-term solutions, hopefully theoretically short-term temporary solutions, like emergency shelters and temporary housing, all the way to the sort of missing middle, the independent social housing and affordable social housing, where the subsidies exist, purpose-built rental and protected rental market, and then ownership on the far right in the market end of the continuum. We, according to our Affordable Housing Strategy, as we've discussed, our municipal levers are best utilized in that missing middle section. That's sort of our space. We leverage our partners and advocacy to support either end of the spectrum, but that middle is where we have our most significant gap in our community and also where we're going to have the biggest impact of our efforts. Action is underway there, as council and the public are aware. There's a lot of work happening there, but it does take time. These are not overnight solutions. These are builds and infrastructure. These are builds and infrastructure in the stock, as well as policy that happens sort of over time to get any kind of critical mass. It takes a little bit of, in the scale of, you know, years. So we have an issue now with people living in their vehicles. And the decision that we want some direction on is whether or not we support some interim policy solutions now while we await the sort of more medium-term actions to bear fruit. So the policy analysis for the immediate term options for people who live year round in their vehicles in Squamish and typically live here, sort of exists in that circle. It is on the permanent end of the housing spectrum and that's an important point that I want to make. This is not temporary housing. If you know, the temporary housing band on the left of the bar, that is for people who have social challenges, health challenges, that prevent them from being able to live in market housing. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about temporary solutions to a gap in the permanent unit stock in the housing continuum. The community group that we're working with, who have representatives here today from the vehicle residents of Squamish, and we're grateful for their presence here today, they asked me two or 300 year-round residents, year-round-ish, some of them may not stay the full year, but they're members of the community in the sense that they work and live here and have friendships and roots here. And generally, according to the group, most are working in Squamish. We've heard that feedback from local business owners as well, that much of their workforce does live in their vehicles. So we've put in a budget request for analysis and engagement on what are our options to support the safety and sustainability in the immediate term for this group of people. We've put that in the budget for counsel consideration. I, I'm going to move on now to the kind of camping part of the discussion so we have the full picture and then we can have a discussion after that. Does that work or does counsel want to pause and talk about this first?
Any immediate questions or you want to keep going?
So then, because I love a continuum, here is the continuum of camping. So on the left, we have the free crown land camping. This is people who sort of pull up, don't register anywhere, somewhere on the Mamcom Forest Service Road or some other crown site, stay for theoretically two weeks, maximum two weeks, but we know that quite often it is longer, sometimes it's shorter. We don't have a ton of data about this because there isn't any kind of registration system. So we have estimates, two or 3,000 vehicles a year-ish. And then kind of moving one up from that is a sort of low amenity, low-cost camping option. We don't have really anything in that area now. And then moving along a little bit further is the municipal or nonprofit municipally subsidized campground. And between those two options, we have about 110 sites plus a little bit of overflow that's more rustic and could technically be considered in that low amenity area, but the numbers are a bit unclear. The, moving on from that, we have about 500 or so provincial rec sites and B C parks campsites in our region, plus a number of others just outside the region, but that's within the boundaries of Squamish. And then we have the privately run campgrounds equalling approximately 375 sites. These tend to be amenity-rich, you know, views, water access. This is on the typically nicer end of the continuum in terms of the experience and the amenities for campers. So it's, we have to make, apply some formulas here in terms of capacity, but our basic math says that if we're managing a 90% capacity over high season, which is probably conservative, that's about 106 visitor days per year. So just keep that in mind in terms of.
Hundred six thousand?
Hundred six, sorry, did I say hundred six? Hundred six thousand. Visitor days, sorry, per summer. And just for comparison, the B C parks and rec sites and trails sees about 125,000 in a full year in the rec sites and trails within Squamish. So most of the visitation happens in the summer. And another thing to note, I think is important for context too, is that rec sites and trails have seen 34% growth in the last four years in utilization of their campsites. And we don't have that comparable data for the privately run campgrounds, but it's probably similar. They have certainly seen some growth is what we've heard. So with the implementation of our camping bylaw, we've limited the capacity on the far left end of the spectrum. What that, what that means is that some of the campers who are, who formerly would have been in that end of the spectrum, some of them are going to go to the municipally run or nonprofit campground. Some might go to the paid sites, the sort of higher cost, higher amenity sites, but that doesn't tend to be the population that will pay $40 a night for a campsite. And so most will go either deeper into the back country or they'll go sort of more dispersed into residential areas. And then if a complaint comes in, then we'll enforce based on our traffic bylaw. So this is moving the problem around. This year, this was a tolerable experience and we had a low wildfire years this year as well, which helped. And I think with the community conversation, there was some more tolerance from neighbors, so there wasn't as much flags being raised for our bylaw teams. But nonetheless, this, there's a capacity pressure happening on this end of the continuum because of the bylaw that we introduced. So the new capacity, if this is the direction that we collectively had, is in this area here, in this low amenity, low cost area, because that closest, it's the closest match or the demand of the population that we pressure the capacity under, if that makes sense. The benefit of doing this is that then the campers don't go in high volumes into the back country or high volumes into the residential neighborhoods, which causes other problems. So Flynnrow is working on developing options on existing crown land. They have identified a few sites and have some due diligence underway for those sites. And so district staff are partnering with Flynnrow to talk about developing an operating model and what's feasible and what makes sense, given the constraints of the population and the constraints of our community. And we've had a few initial conversations with key stakeholder groups to test the waters and figure out what makes the most sense. And that's been great. It's been a really good process so far. So that's it for me. A couple of, there's a recommendation for each issue. I won't read them out, but maybe open up to discussion now.
Counsel Stoller. Counsel Anderson.
So on the proposed continued engagement for the policy options for the slosh residents who live year round in their vehicles. In the staff report, you included the report from Canmore, which I really appreciated making that. But the last section of that talks about the safe parking program. So is that the sort of avenue that we're looking at in that first recommendation?
That's, that's one of several different options that could be explored. We have talked to a couple of other jurisdictions who have, or read about other jurisdictions who have taken other approaches, like permitting approach is something that comes up quite often, that you have some conditions of your permit and then you can park in several different designated areas or regions if you're complying with the conditions of your permit. So that could be an option. A safe parking program can take a number of different forms. That would be an option as well. Yeah, we need to get into it to figure out what makes sense, but that's not the only option. It is one of them.
Mary Ellen.
When you say work with Flynnrow in developing a low-cost campground option, what are you contemplating in terms of the operating model?
Well, there's a number of different options that would be available to us. I, you know, I think, jump in anytime Scott, if you want to add anything. We want to keep the costs low because that's, as I said, that's the gap on the continuum that we need to meet. We're adding more $20 a night campsites to make it a cost recovery.
Somewhere between five and $10.
Yeah, or possibly less. It needs to be a nominal cost so that people will use it rather than going into the back country, or at least a bulk of people will use it. So some kind of a low-cost model where there's a staff check-in person to make sure they know who's there, they know how long they've been there, they're collecting fees, everybody's following all the rules, but probably not a sort of full-time caretaker type person because that would drive the costs up and without a corresponding subsidy, that would be, that would be challenged. So these are the kinds of things we want to get together with Tourism Squamish, the Access Society, possibly local campground operators as well, and obviously with Flynnrow's leadership, and have some conversations about what's important, what are our must-haves, and see what the model might look like from there.
You're not proposing that the operating costs are downloaded to a local government?
I think there might be a blended model of contributing sources of operating funding. If the cost, if the fees are not cost recovery, there will have to be some conversation about where these costs get covered from.
But they wouldn't be downloaded to a local government?
That if, if the local government does not want to accept the cost, then no, they wouldn't be downloaded.
So one of the things that really concerns me about us working on the operating model is that there's insufficient government, provincial government investment in campgrounds and generally tourism infrastructure in this corridor after they've pushed millions and millions of dollars into Destination B C to promote the heck out of the Cedar Sky Corridor. We are now fortunately, very lucky to have lots of people that want to visit here and that is fantastic. And this government is shirking its duties in terms of now putting the infrastructure to responsibly manage all of those visitors. So I sat with the minister, with my colleague, Counsel at U V C M, and said, you are not downloading the operational costs for a low-cost campground onto local government. This is not our job, it's yours. I was very clear about that and I won't budge off that opinion. Development counselors may feel differently, but it's their job as a province, not ours. Happy to be part of the conversation and figuring out what the model looks like as long as for me, it's not our operating dollars that are funding this. So I feel, as you can tell, quite strongly about that. But I think it's the right thing to do to look for these low-cost options within close proximity to where people want to recreate and if it's safe from Flynnrow's point of view in terms of that. The one thing I appreciate about the Canmore report is the criteria piece and how that criteria is developed. I know from speaking to other mayors that similarly have many people visiting their communities in vans, is that you do start to get a mix of people who do really need the social supports. They're, they're not working, they're, you know, they do have mental health or social issues that really require a different level of care and support. And when you start to mix those groups, it doesn't always turn out well for everybody involved. So I think the criteria about the footprint, the ability to move the vehicle is really sort of essential and that we work with Maureen McKell and her team on then what is the option for those folks that aren't fitting this visitor demographic, but should be maybe supported in different ways. So I think that's a missing piece on this, is how do we support those folks? I think the van-dwelling community is very self-managing and will look after each other and more concerned about the people that need that extra level of support for food and housing and mental health. Absolutely, thank you. And I've got other comments around the van-dwelling piece, but that campground piece, I think this is the right direction to go. We should be very careful about stepping into that operating model.
Thank you for that question. Counsel Anderson, I'm going to put myself on the list.
Yes, we had a couple of weeks ago, a letter from a resident of Ring Creek, joining the discussions, persons observed the discussion relating their experiences up in that neighborhood. My question, or my first question is, has there been any liaison with the regional district and particularly with representatives for Area D, whether they are interested or following initiatives, whether it's relevant or would be advisable to bring them into the project?
Through the chair? No, there has not, because we haven't really talked to them much about this, but point made, yeah, thank you. We will.
I'm not going to say how many decades ago this was, but I once took a course on recreation, forest recreation management at U V C. And why this comes to mind is that it strikes me that the faculty of forestry at U V C and also at B C I T would be great resource people, source of information, not so much on the focus of this recommendation, but on our ongoing efforts to cope with pressures, general camping pressures. It strikes me that there could be some interest in student projects for some of the engagement, surveying, and analysis work that might come along as part of this, what I expect will be an ongoing initiative on our part. So I just offer that as a suggestion. The B C I T, U V C faculty of forestry, there could be some resource people there. I also prompted to bring that up because the Canmore report was extraordinarily interesting and there's more of that work and benchmarking work being done, no doubt, at those two institutions.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. So myself, Counsel Penningill, Mary Elliot, and I was, the campground one actually to me is more straightforward and I take the mayor's comments and we've had similar discussions at the regional district board actually with the same types of pressures resulting from the same marketing plan without the idea of what happens when the people get here. So that is certainly, it's a corridor-wide concern. You're probably aware of that and there's some remarkable examples in Joffe Levesque, for example, being one of them. But the thing that interests me is the housing component because that, in the previous discussion we had a few months ago, that was the part that kind of jumped out for me that I just personally didn't appreciate. Camping, you can understand that part, but the housing issue, I didn't completely appreciate. And so when I look at the first recommendation, the thing that kind of seems not to be there is where that might be happening. In other words, we can have policy options and so forth and engagement, but are we talking locations as well, sourcing locations? Does Flynnrow have a part to play in that just because they, apart from the tourism issue, they control a lot of land within the district? And so I just see that as a, as a key part of that initiative is identifying where this might happen. That wasn't really a question either, but I'll leave that with you.
I will make up a comment if I may. The vehicle residents of Squamish, you may recall, a couple of months ago when we were bringing this back for, I think, second and third, the camping bylaw, they had put forward a number of location options that they felt in their community would be feasible if we were to go the direction of some kind of a safe parking program. I think that having those sort of on the back burner and aware of the kinds of places that that might take place is good. And the next step of analysis before we really look at that is whether or not that's the right option for our community or if there are other models that are more dispersed and less, less central for a variety of reasons that might make more sense. It did sound like there was municipal land that could be, from their proposal, that could be utilized for a safe parking program if that's the direction we wanted to go. But we would be happy to partner with our Flynnrow colleagues on looking at crown land options as well.
Thank you. And we didn't identify actually the other people at the table. Mr. Baker, bylaw enforcement? Yep. And Mr. Scott Moncrief, who is a general, an affiliate.
Can I not introduce this?
He did.
I do.
Sorry, didn't, did you?
I did.
Oh, you didn't. Sorry, I missed that. I'm not sure what I was thinking. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you. So you mentioned in the report, alluded to moving campers around with some of these policies. And maybe I missed it in the report, but do we have any sense about, you know, although we may be moving. you know, although we may be moving existing camping numbers around, whether we're having any sort of moderating effect on growth? And whether or not, even if the total numbers aren't changing much, if we're impacting different populations, we can that differently? Or do we have any sense of that kind of thing?
Through the chair, it is very early to tell. After the bylaw was implemented, there was a kind of a really mild August in terms of camper volume in those areas. And partly, we felt like maybe the word got out, this is a very well-connected community over social media and so on, and people just knew like, oh, this trouble in Squamish, let's go to Utah or whatever. I think that might have been something that happened. We did not see a dramatic increase in camping in neighborhoods, in this population camping in neighborhoods. There was certainly some of that, but it is early to tell, I think. And our systems, our systems don't really let us pull information like that easily. They're not designed for that, so we have to do it manually, which takes time. It's important. Did you know about that?
Well, I mean, I came over sort of some of the numbers about files that did come in. They're, it's kind of interesting. I mean, basically, we're on trend to be above the same, the same number of calls, which is interesting because that wasn't what I had anticipated once we made us, you know, the community aware that we had a new tool. I assumed that we would increase our call volume, but it stayed about the same. And then also, as Natasha mentioned, there's a lot of, in the details of many of the complaints that I've reviewed, there's definitely indication that there is, yes, an increased understanding on the point of residents that are making complaints about camping. However, they'll say in the complaint, "I'm not really concerned with camping, but could you go talk to them about this or that or whatever?" And so there's definitely a lot of, yeah, noticeable increase in the understanding. And in the areas that are recovered by the camping bylaw, we only received 11 complaints in that area around the Manheim Forest Service Road and two in the estuary. And so the rest, so I think there was, just based on the information that was out there in the public, a lot of people made their own decisions to stay outside of those areas. And because of the communication that went out about sensitivity, environmental sensitivity, cultural sensitivity of those areas, that that message got through to a lot of people. So I was surprised.
So on the policy options for Squamish residents, so one of the things I appreciated about the Kenmore report is that they have a lot more data. And I would like us to start to acquire that level of data. So I really appreciated their survey of local businesses in terms of how many of your employees, and I think we could do this retroactively, do you believe, lived in a van? Does van-dwelling affect your decisions around hiring? I thought that was a smart question. I'd love to know the sentiment of our employers here. We've certainly heard from some of them through our discussions this spring. But I'd really love to see that kind of survey go out from the Chamber and Tourism Squamish to survey their members and understand the context from their perspective.
Sorry. That's terrible.
That case ended.
So I think we are actually missing some of the data to help us make long-term decisions around this. And they had knowledge of how long people stay. That would be great to get to that kind of average length of stay for those folks that we think is somewhere, 200 to 300, that's a huge range. And in earlier reports, it was less than 100. And so I don't have a lot of confidence in that number simply because I don't know what it's based on. So I wonder if there's a way through also surveying business that we get a better sense of it so that we really understand the scope of what we're trying to manage. One of the policy pieces that regretfully has the potential to fall off the table is that we lost our rural dividend funding this year. And with that, we were going to create a scheme whereby local employers rent suites for their employees and your employment is, and your, sorry, your housing is tied to your employment. And I think that should be a consideration in the 2020 budget since we're not going to get that money from the province. But I actually think that is fundamentally a big piece of the solution here is to help homeowners with suites and carriages get out from under the landlord agreement act and provide short-term accommodation for the high season while still maintaining that suite for other parts of the year that they could use, for their family and friends, that sort of thing. So I'd actually still like to see that policy come back for a budget discussion. I think it actually was a really critical piece of the puzzle. We also know that our short-term rental regulations, we ask, have to bring back how we can incentivize more long-term rentals. We're putting some of these suites back into the long-term rental market. So I think this is part of the discussion as well, connected to this. I totally understand that some people are choosing to live in their van to have a smaller footprint. And also, there are people just saying, "I can't afford a place." And so how do we crack them up for those people who would actually prefer to be in a rental accommodation versus their van? So I don't want us to forget that those two policy pieces can really help us with this as well. I'd also like to have the data on how many of our rental suites will come into play over the next two summers in terms of built. We've got them accounted for in terms of C and Cs, but when are they actually going to appear? That would influence my decision-making. And also, just as we consider where, if any, sort of this idea of a safe lock program, you know, how do we use our municipal infrastructure, like our own campground, and potentially investing in that since it's close to the Red Center versus places that are closer to residential, which I think have a higher opportunity for progress in this local parking lot? And I would just say, there is a role for businesses to play here, so nothing is free. And I do think employers need to take some level of responsibility for the staff that they're hiring, especially in the high season. So if there's a business model or an operating model, I'd like that to be explored with the local businesses at the table. So maybe they contribute to a monthly camping fee if their employees are using a safe lock program to just help cover our operating costs. That's one of the biggest complaints I heard from taxpayers, is that I pay taxes, so why does someone else get to live in my community for free? That argument won't go away, and so somehow, in our long-term planning, we have to address it. So I think local business needs to be at the table either through the Chamber and/or Tourism Squamish. And what we bring to the table is potentially land to the conversation. So those are my thoughts on sort of that piece of this.
And through the chair, I just want to be clear about your comments, that those are things that we should include in our policy analysis and options development work. I appreciate that the lack of data is very challenging, and I think we need a dedicated resource to dig that up for us. I don't think we can handle doing that off the side of our desks with our system limitations. So we need to have a bit of a short burst of effort to develop that information.
Well, and I think this is where the business community needs to step up and support this effort, either through resourcing or some money. This is, affects them as well. These are often their employees, and so it's not just a local government problem, it's a whole community-wide solution that we need to come at this with.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Stone. If you can look at the recommendations.
I'm just trying to pull it up again. The staff report, I think it requested or was estimating kind of a $7,000 budget allocation. Can you speak a little bit to what you envision that actually going towards, given kind of some of these like base pieces that are mentioned in the course to data collection and potentially opening a bit of kind of response?
Certainly, and consulting budgets are always a little bit of a how-long's-a-piece-of-string question. So with $7,000, I think we could host some good community conversations with local businesses and with the user group and with, you know, potentially neighborhoods or neighborhood associations or other sort of community stakeholders. We could do some kind of a survey so we get some quantitative data that we can look at, and we can do a good review, a systematic review of what other jurisdictions have done so far and what the outcomes have been and how that applies to our situation based on the data we get back from the community engagement and come up with some recommendations. That's about what that would look like. It's not like, you know, $1,000.
Counsel? So we have two recommendations. Some you'd like to consider moving those? Counselor French?
Counsel speaker.
Is there a second?
Louible.
Counselor Anderson? Counselor French?
Thanks for all the work that went into this. And I too am thankful for the Kenmore report. I found it really valuable, lots of data, and it really made me alive to our lack of data. So with the feedback that you've had from counsel, I think that this motion really sets us up nicely, move forward.
Counselor Anderson? I'm particularly glad to see the partnerships evolving out of this initiative. And here today, we have with us the Ministry of Forestlands and Natural Resources. There may be other crown agencies with lands of interest as we move forward in identifying sites. And presumably, this partnership that we have here proposed that will also be able to address such as BC Hydro, for example, other categories of crown lands that may be under jurisdiction of other ministers. Counselor Stone?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for all your work on this. And even going back to the initial bringing forward the camping bylaw and a path with the responsiveness of that and sort of pulling out those pieces and adding a new piece to your favorite thing continuums and building our understanding with that. The report was, the Kenmore report, I felt was really interesting. It showed, really spoke to moving around as sort of enforcement changed and science changed in different areas. So I think it's important that we do develop these places where it is consistently a place to build for sort of both of those groups. So I think we're going in the right direction. But I am with Bear on the Sunrow of the downloading to the district on the operating of these. I would really like to avoid that so we can find some other partners that can maybe take that up. But in general, I'm seeing both recommendations.
Counselor Pen Gil, Counselor Stone?
So I will support both of these, support the mayor's comments as well on the downloading piece. And with the first part, first clause there, I just want to make sure that we're paying adequate attention to the different populations that are in that. I think the Kenmore report did a really good job of identifying some of the populations. And I think our employers have a really important role to play in this. But it's, to my mind, it's not just sort of an employment issue or a sort of mental health, social, you know, people's social challenges. There's other populations in there that I think we can ignore. And the other thing that's in the back of my mind as we move towards technological change and what it needs to work and needing that flexibility and so on, I think, you know, well, I assume we all anticipate this will be a growing issue and some of those things will be playing in here. So I think it's just really important to make sure that we're not just focusing this around the employment, breaking border. There's other populations and factors in all of this.
Counselor Stone?
Sorry, I was like, I was going to say.
Okay. Over the gun, I'll call the question, all in favor, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is the special one on? I know. We're all ready a little bit behind, so this one ends over at the end of the row. You might.
Yeah, that's okay.
We're a little bit behind.
Yeah, I'm a little bit. Thanks, please.
Thank you, Marat. Item 3, sub 3, Nearly Climate Action Plan Project Update. Just going.
Thanks. Good morning, or some morning, yes, good morning. I'm Dora Gunn, I'm a sustainability coordinator with the district. And today, I'm going to be providing a short update on the community climate action plan as well as announcing a climate leadership team. So for those who are watching and may not be familiar with this plan, it's a climate mitigation plan, so aiming to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from within the District of Squamish boundaries. The plan will reflect the need to limit global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius as per the 2018 report from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. So it will provide an energy and emissions inventory as well as actions to reduce emissions and energy use. Our consultants are the Whistler Center for Sustainability and the Community Energy Association, and we're aiming to complete the plan in early 2020. So I'm going to talk a bit about the development of the plan. We got going at the end of August, and we have completed our startup activities. So these include introductory meetings, reviewing our existing work plans, our communication strategy, and then a project launch with a council presentation, a webpage, and a media release. The next step is the development of climate leadership team as well as the inventory and business as usual. And so I'll talk more about the climate leadership team on a following slide. The Community Energy Association has developed a draft inventory and a business as usual. We feel that there's some more work required on this, so we're going to have a follow-up meeting which will involve some staff, consultants, as well as some of the individuals on the climate leadership team to work some more on that. Even once we're happy with that piece, it's still going to be an ongoing piece of work that can continue as the plan develops. So if we get new information along the way as the plan develops, we can improve that inventory and business as usual forecast. So that's why it has a dotted arrow up there, because it's going to be something that's somewhat done now, but it's going to continue to happen. The third step is the action plan and consultation step. So the next step for the Community Energy Association is to develop some draft actions and modeling to go along with those actions. Following that, there'll be a day-long workshop which will include staff from the district as well as the leadership team who will have input on the draft actions as well as potentially proposing new actions. And that will then go back to the Community Energy Association for more modeling work. There'll also be a workshop for industrial, commercial, and institutional folks who may produce emissions in Squamish. And then finally, the public open house and survey. And then the last step of the project is report writing, and there'll be some iterations of that. So one, timing-wise, one of the challenges we have is that we're moving into some of these more public events, and we need to just make sure that those don't happen over Christmas or too close to Christmas so that we get enough participation. So the climate leadership team, the goals of this team were to create a team of experts that would guide the development of the plan. It wasn't intended to be a stakeholder group or a citizen group. It was meant to be experts to guide the plan. Also, we wanted folks who were local, either living or working locally. And then we were looking for a diversity of individuals on the team. The process to create the team, we did a public call, so we advertised that through our usual channels like Chief, E-News, that kind of thing. We had over 40 applications, and I was blown away by the level of expertise that we had in the community. We have an amazing team, and there are all people who aren't on the team. There were so many amazing people we had write in to us. I was really excited. So the applications were reviewed by staff as well as our consultants, and then the final decision was made by Linda Glenda, our CIO. So we're going to update our website with a bigger introduction to each one of these individuals that I can provide today. I also want to note that they're not representing their So I'm going to go through each one of them. So Meredith Adler is the executive director of Student Energy, which is a global charity working to develop the next generation of energy leaders. They work with over 50,000 young energy leaders across Canada and in over 150 countries around the world. Her core expertise within climate change and energy is effective community engagement, building the skills of people so they can be part of the green economy, and training energy and clean tech entrepreneurs. Next on the list is Ian Bruce. He's the director of Science and Policy for the Davis-Duke Foundation and a leading climate change policy analyst in Canada. He leads the Davis-Duke's National Science Strategy and Stakeholder Engagement Initiatives to Advance Environmental and Climate Solutions. Then we have Louisa Verheen, who actually we met this morning. She has a master's degree in physics and a PhD focusing on renewable energy technologies. Currently, she's a sustainability strategist for GHG Accounting, where she completes GHG emissions inventories, complex carbon assessments, and identifies emissions reduction potential for municipalities and other organizations. Bob Deeks has been involved in sustainable low-energy construction since the early 2000s. His company, RDC Fine Homes, was the first local builder to certify to the Build Green Standard in 2006, and they built the first modeled net-zero home in 2010. Bob is the current co-vice chair of the Provincial Energy Step Code. Fred Gattala, his career has been focused on practically addressing GHG emissions primarily through the reduced usage of fossil fuels. He's currently the director for Carbon and Sustainability at Advanced Biofuels Canada, which is a national industry association established to promote the production and use of advanced biofuels in Canada. And then we have Emma Jarrett, who is the manager of Management Systems for Squamish Terminals. That includes health, safety, environment, and quality. She has a background in biochemistry and trained with Climate Smart. She's also a member of the Port of Vancouver Climate and Air Action Workshop Team. So Ian Pickett is a faculty member at Quest University with a specialization in community responses to climate change. His ongoing research activities include work on visualizing development scenarios in Squamish and examining cumulative effects of climate change and resource development in watersheds. He currently teaches courses focusing on earth and climate science, resource management, and interdisciplinary perspectives on climate change. And then finally, we have Doug Ray, who is a member of Carbon Engineering's management team, where he leads their international business development activities. Carbon Engineering is a Squamish-based clean tech energy company, leading the commercialization of technology that captures CO2 directly from the atmosphere, and a second technology that synthesizes it into transportation fuels. So we have an absolutely amazing team, and we had the first meeting with the team last night, and many of you were there. And then we have the workshop coming up in the next month or so. And that's all I have for you today, although I understand the mayor, there may be a conversation about the council representative. One other thing I should note is that we currently have eight members on this team. We do have two additional spaces available on the team. We have been trying really hard to see if there might be a youth in town who's interested in participating on the team. We have yet to have anyone come forward, but we're still hoping that might happen. And then we have reached out to Squamish Nation to see if they're interested in participating on the team or in some other way related to the project.
Counsel French.
Just kind of curious, from our meeting last night, one of the people facilitating was Peter from Community Energy Association?
That's right.
And he was joining us from Penticton or Kelowna?
Kelowna.
I didn't catch his last name, and I've been trying to figure out who he is in the organization. Who is that?
So his name is Peter Robinson. Can't remember his exact title, but I can follow if I would like.
No, I have. I found Peter Robinson, but I wasn't sure if that was the guy.
That's him, yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Peddyl, Counsel Anderson.
So I appreciated the discussion last night, and it seems like a really strong group, but I guess the one question after seeing this, we have other organizations in town, NGOs and so on, that are really eager to get active, in some cases have grants or are applying for big grants, and have plans to take their own actions, and none of us are going to get there by ourselves, we're going to have to all do this together. So how do you foresee this interfacing with those and make sure that collectively we're not duplicating efforts? And?
Yeah. So I think this team, there's three meetings for this team. They're going to guide the development of the plan, and there's lots of opportunity for staff to continue to work with other organizations in the community through the development of the plan, as well as into the implementation stage, which will be ongoing for a certain period of time, I would imagine. So I think folks who are keen to be involved in this work, absolutely, there's opportunities for us to continue to work with them. You know, even if they aren't on the team, that doesn't stop us from continuing to work with them.
Go ahead.
So like, because there's some public engagement pieces in that, are we expecting those groups to attend and interact there, or there'll be sort of one-on-one meetings? Or like, how does that, how does the integration happen? Or is that, you know, next year that starts to roll out?
I would think both. I mean, it would be great if anybody who's interested could come out to the public engagement sessions, but also if there's a particular person who's really keen and maybe represents an organization, then absolutely, I would be happy to work with them directly as well.
Go ahead. Don, sorry. Oh, send it first.
Okay. If I might add to what Ms. Gunn has said, and for the benefit of the public, is that this climate leadership team is really a concise, specific, task-oriented team in terms of being the experts to advise on creation of the plan. That plan will come out with future actions on how to implement in months and years to come, which to Counsel Peddyl's concern will likely integrate other individuals in the community. We just don't know exactly what that looks like yet until the plan is finished. That helps us.
Thank you. Counsel Anderson.
Yes, one of the questions that was asked of Peter Robinson with the Canadian Energy Association concerned inventory methodology, and I'm wondering, the last baseline work that was done in 2007 was essentially a look at consumption trends for different forms of energy, and then we could come back 20 years, five, 10, 20 years later and do the same. My question is, are we being mindful of, in the methodology being Mr. Robinson is pursuing today, that we will be able to return and do that time comparison and benchmarking? So is there attention given to the comparability of data in future as we come up with a methodology for inventory?
To the chair. So absolutely, the methodology that's used for this project will be documented and included in the report so that it can be replicated in the future. And there's consideration of some of the data that's used in the inventory, some data is easier to get than other data, and so how we, you know, as I said, we're still working a bit on a methodology for this plan. So how we choose to move forward with that, for example, transportation, let's say, personal vehicles is a bit of a challenging piece, and whether we just go with something quite basic, like what the Community Energy Association has initially presented to us, or whether we choose to go for something a bit more complex, which might involve some future work on our transportation master plan and data coming out of that, that's still to be determined. But absolutely, what you're saying about making sure it's something that we can replicate in the future is something that will be considered in this plan.
Thank you. Counsel Sumner.
Just want to ask staff to take a look at the terms of reference of the climate leadership team, and we referenced what there was in the meeting last night, but they clarified that counsel was there as kind of observers to the process, because this is a staff committee, that might be helpful for sure. Does that make sense?
Sure. So the terms of reference for the committee layout, it was a 10-member committee, but also would include, or would, on top of that, have the mayor and an additional counselor present at those meetings. Most of the rest of the details of the terms of reference probably have too much to address to focus more about what history away is, that kind of thing. But the counselor who's going to be on that team or as part of those meetings hasn't yet been identified, so I will see that today.
Counsel.
And I just, you know, I appreciate that the discussion yesterday about inventory and that and so on, that it's still ongoing. I guess, you know, I'm just challenged still by the idea that we might leave some things out of the inventory, and for me, understanding, you know, I understand that there are things we can do more, or less of that, of costs, or more or less, and so on, in different capacity to estimate accurately. But I guess I would prefer to have everything in our geographic batteries in our inventory to the best we can, and caveat some of it, like, hey, this is a pretty rough estimate on this piece, and then move forward from there with that sort of baseline understanding. And I just throw in that, like, I understand that some things, even if we have no control over our very little, I still think it's really important to understand in the broader context of how much of a difference we're making for the money we're spending in the overall picture. I think we have seen, in the situation we're in, because federal and internal governments that have authority over much of, many of these things haven't done what they need to do, so we're in an issue of how do we make sure we survive? And so for me, it's really important to have that, at least as a context piece, I think. So, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to share that and that there's still some consideration.
I can speak briefly to that. So after the first council presentation where the scope was discussed, we did have some more conversations with our consultants about what could be done as far as improving that a bit, and so they went back and looked at it. Large industry, there really isn't anything that qualifies as large industry yet in town. We do have some estimates for WLG, so we can include those as for future. And then on some of the other ones, we will try to do some sort of order of magnitude estimate, so it won't necessarily be part of the inventory, but it will be used so you can compare, oh, you know, our community is this much and that particular item is that much. So it will be, we will expand the scope a little bit to try and include some of those issues as we can.
So it's also important to note that whether or not, appreciating your comment fully for context and understanding, but that whether or not it's in the inventory doesn't influence whether or not we can take action on it. They're two independent but related things. Even if it's not in the inventory, or it's not easy to capture, or whatever, we can do whatever is within our realm or our scope as a municipal government.
So you were looking for one council member?
Yes, that's right. And I honestly haven't had a chance to discuss that with the mayor and how that process would.
Well, I guess I'm interested in who is interested in sitting on this committee? So it's one full-day workshop and another half-day?
Yeah, another two- or three-hour meeting.
Counsel.
I think that's it.
Oh.
I was going to suggest just those interested email the mayor. Because typically, these are mayor's decisions.
They are, but I was hoping we would have the date for the full-day workshop, because a lot of these folks have jobs, and if it doesn't work for the person I appoint, so I don't really want to appoint today until we have the date of that workshop.
Sure.
That's why, sure, people want to. I could just give a show of hands, who's interested.
Qualified interest.
Qualified.
So that's four.
I'll spell it out in my email.
Okay. So once we have the date from Dora, I'll send out an email to let the board, three of you know. Oh, Armin.
Chris, Jenna, Armin, Eric.
Okay.
Yes. Qualified, Eric.
If that date disqualifies some of you from participating, then I try to give your decision.
Counsel Peddyl, Counsel French.
Just a sort of process question, because the one thing, as much as I might like to participate, I've been trying to reconcile in my mind that this is a staff committee, and we're talking about the mayor and a counselor sitting on it, and is that waiting, putting too much council influence on this committee?
Through the chair, as I said to the group last night, the participation of counsel on the staff committee is not to actually overly participate. Our job is there to listen, so that we can communicate the perspective of this group back to council in the whole, and also where the group seeks our thoughts on the council perspective, if they're talking about priorities in relation to our strategic plan, or the OCP, or the political nature. So if we go in this policy direction, is that politically untenable for council, or is that something that you would be bold enough to champion? So they're looking for that perspective. But I have so much respect for this council, but none of us are qualified like these people are qualified to make those decisions. So I really see our job as mostly to listen and represent where we can any previous council decisions or strategic plan, to just provide context in the conversation, rather than we're just treating it actively and having definitive opinions as this group discusses both policy actions. So that's kind of the context in which, and it's just good to have two eyes and ears there, rather than just relying on the mayor.
Counsel Benj.
I just wanted to share that I would have been interested in this appointment, that full-day workshop, and that period of time just does not work on my schedule.
Anything further?
There's no recommendation, no resolution required?
You've mentioned in your presentation the workshop for specifically, or among others, institutional, commercial, and in, sorry, industrial, commercial, institutional stakeholders. I just wanted to suggest that sometimes people in those sectors, and I can think of some people and some businesses and some sectors, that may not think of themselves as emitters. And if you put out an advertisement saying, let's talk about reducing our GHG emissions, it may not catch them. But if you say, if you've got some ideas for fuel substitution, or material substitution, or carbon sequestration, so I guess what I'm suggesting is in our messaging, that we keep it broad, broad to the terms of reference, and I know Mr. Dan Wilson is very good at that, very broad scope, and reminding us of that broad scope.
Nothing further? Thank you very much. And that completes, I think, your agenda?
First, the chairman.
Moved by the mayor, second by Counsel Herbert. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.